You can't handle this.
It's good. I think it's good to meet in the bar right now.
Thank God.
What allegiance to the line of the United States of America and to the Republic for extrasans. One nation, under God, indivisible, with every change of state.
Well, call.
Jenny David.
Here.
Roger Mayhew.
Yes.
Charles Wiltie.
Here.
Brenda Simmons.
Here.
Craig Scott.
Here.
Uh, approval of the agenda. Any additions or corrections?
Oh, got a road commission. Wayman. Wayman.
Wayman.
Waymaster.
Waymaster.
Yeah.
So road commissioner or waymaster, you want something you want to discuss?
Yeah. Yeah.
How about, um?
Contract, say.
Okay.
Master contract.
What we tabled last meeting, did you plan on discussing that?
No, I figured we'd just.
But.
Just table it till the next, next voting meeting, you know? That's my intention was.
Oh, I thought we were gonna, I, I.
We can, we can talk more. The promotion.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine. Go ahead.
I'd rather talk about it in a committee of the whole.
Okay.
You okay with that?
Yeah, yeah.
Anything else?
Where are you putting that?
Uh, gee, this will be fairly quick.
Yeah.
Believe.
What's that? Waymaster?
Road Commissioner Waymaster contract. Any other additions or corrections?
No.
Public comment? Denise.
He's.
Welcome. Any public comments? Any public comment on the phone? For appointments, Randy Booth, equalization director, related to peer review committee agreements.
I don't see Randy, but what these are, the annual agreements that we have to do with the remonumentation group. These two are peer review committee. What they do is meet and they determine which corners they're going to survey for the coming year to use their remonumentation funds. And instead, it's a third or fourth time we've done these since I've been here.
That's, but on both of these are Larry K- Kavanaugh and Robinson Consulting Services? So nothing new there or?
Nothing new. In fact, the contracts were actually written up by our attorneys and so even that base has been covered. So it's just a formality for the board to approve the contracts.
How much money?
Uh. Might be stated in the contract. It is grant dependent.
Oh, I see.
So it may have changed.
I've got it. I see it.
Any questions, guys?
No.
This is the annual contract, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
And it's grant dependent?
It's just, uh, the, the changing. The dates of it is from May to December of twenty-three. Do, should it say twenty-four?
Actually, it's the twenty-three and they're still, they're doing their twenty-three work and we'll see a twenty-four contract.
In twenty-four.
Yeah. Uh, but yeah, this is their, this twenty-three. I asked the same thing.
The peer review group met yesterday and they reviewed the corners that were done.
Really?
Through the grant and then they're submitted to my office for recording. So they were meeting yesterday when they did land a meeting.
Okay.
Any other questions? The meeting went well?
We didn't attend, but they were in the room next to us, so they were reviewing.
So will Randy be present next week or?
I sure hope so.
If there's any questions, someone's going to give us an update on the meeting or?
He should be able to do that, too.
Okay. Discussion items, Ogumahill's rec complex?
We've seen the letter in the mail, um, the date, uh, well, the date is the thirteenth. I think, I guess it came to me on Monday. This is very helpful. The township has sort of laid out what they are willing to do with the complex and very timely that it came in uh, when it did. Uh, the bottom of the first page and the top of the second page really sums up what we needed to know. It says the township would be willing to cover portions of the costs for uh, title search and survey work as needed to get the deal done. They are not interested in any kind of a land swap or doing anything else. They just want to uh, be able to assume control of this property. I was speaking with Mike and, and if you know, he can help me with his last name, uh, at the train's meeting today.
Mike Durfee. Mike Durfee, yeah.
Um, they have, um, pretty significant plans for out there for some improvements that they want to do. Uh, he's actually very excited, was talking to me about Little League and disc golf and other things that are happening out there. And they very much want to apply for some DNR grants to do some of the work they want to do out there. So they'd like to get this done by the end of January, if that's possible. And again, our only concern, uh, from that list of things that came back from the attorney was getting that survey done. Sounds like they're, uh, willing to pay depending on how you, uh, interpret, but they say they would be willing to cover portions of the costs, uh, of the survey. And I'm assuming that's going to meet at the fifty-fifty split that we had talked about before, uh, which is fantastic news. The word I received when I got one quote on the survey was roughly four thousand dollars. So if they would cover half of that, I think that's an acceptable proposition. Uh, other than that, they are, they're ready to go. They've actually put this in front of their planning commission already, uh, which is actually a step they need to do uh, when they have a planning commission and they were a hundred percent behind it as well. So that's, that's where we stand.
Go ahead.
Uh, my only comment is, you know, it says, um, pay for part, part of this. I think if you think fifty-fifty, then it probably should say fifty percent of the cost. If we're going to sign a contract, I don't want to, and then they pay, you know, ten percent.
Right.
I think it should say fifty percent of the cost rather than pay some of the costs.
Then you, you would like a contract written up then?
Yeah, we'd, we'd want to do that.
A sales agreement? Is that what we're trying to say? A sales agreement?
Sure. Um, they're talking about, uh.
We'd have to sell it to them for at least a dollar, right?
Right. And, and so that's what all be incorporated. Uh, we might do the, the agreement for any of the title work and the survey independent of that, because that's something we can get rolling on right now.
Oh, yeah.
Um, and then, uh, they, we don't want to be, uh, sign off on it until all that's done anyway. So it might be a two-step process, but if you were in agreement, uh, I can get back with the township and get that moving.
Oh, absolutely.
This is just a letter of request. It's not a contract.
Right, right.
Okay, I got you.
So, so the way I look at this is, I mean, obviously, that's a beautiful chunk of property out there. Um, we own it. We haven't done anything with it. It would be nice to see some, you know, really good use get out of it. Um, I know like the baseball field that could really turn into something good. I mean, could turn into them generating good money. Disc golf has gotten extremely popular and from what I've heard, not a disc golfer, but I've talked to a few people that played it. It's a really nice course. So there, they do a few things there. They're going to generate money off of that as well. I mean, to me, this is one of them, one of them deals. If we were financially in a position as a county with a fun balance and operations were normal, we didn't have all these problems, I would look at this property as a revenue maker for us, but sadly, we're not in that position. Haven't, and we haven't done anything there in a long time. So, I mean, I think it'd be good to see this property turn into something. So, yeah, I'm in support of it.
Denise.
I'm confused. West Branch Township has the lease on it. They can do whatever they want. Why do they have to have ownership?
I ask the same question though, why, you know? If they want it, we don't need it.
Well, that conversation actually started here, um, and the conversation was, did we want to continue with the liability of owning this? If we're not doing anything with it, well, we don't have a parks department to run it. We don't have a maintenance crew that goes out and does anything with it. Uh, and so that's how the conversation got started and then we started talking about the RV park and the lease we have there and so on. Um, but that, that's where it started. It wasn't a matter of, uh, you know, the.
Ogumahill's rec is the one that takes care of it.
Right.
And they have a board.
They do, yeah. They do.
So are they part of this that's planning on doing the, making these changes? They were here.
Yeah, they're, they're siding with the township. They, they want the township to do this. I've talked to the chairman.
Is that Jimmy Lucas?
Jimmy Lucas.
Yeah.
And, you know, lives in the township and, no, they want the township to do it. They want to, they run, run one, uh, grant funding and everything else through the township.
It'd just be nice to hear them, them together, making sure that everybody's on the same page. Again, I think that this is great. This is basically kid-based. Um, but it'd be nice to hear from West Branch Township and this organization together that they have the same vision for this property. And I, I believe they do. Don't get me wrong.
Jim's come to this, our meeting.
Right, but it's been a, it's been a bit.
Yeah.
I don't remember all of this. I mean, yes, they had plans. I don't disagree with that. I, I just, it's nice to hear that they all agree.
Well, I went to pay my taxes at West Branch Township for the property I own and township here, what, last summer? And they were right on me. Come on, hey, we'd like to get this done, you know? Both sides, you know, record, the, the recreation and the township. And I brought it, I brought us to a conversation then. Uh, and was determined we needed to just do do the property search kind of thing and and a survey get done. And I told them, I says, we are really busy. You guys are the buyer. You take on the, take on the task of doing that. And, and, uh, we'll get this thing going.
Right.
But you're the ones that are motivated to get it. We're not, we're not motivated to get rid of it, but we, we just soon, you know? I mean, they came to us, how long ago? I mean.
It's been before this board.
Yeah.
Um, Denise, have you came across any other matches with this?
Um, when they received it from West Branch Industries, I'm not certain why we need a survey because it's already been surveyed.
How long ago was that?
Probably when West Branch Industry gave it to them because when they received it in nineteen ninety-four, it's a survey description.
Said survey show all the buildings on it?
No.
That's, that's what the attorney was recommending that.
That's a modern survey. Which wouldn't have been required. They would have just wanted to unreserve it.
I mean, this is definitely not my forte, but the attorney said he needed that survey and there was a special name for it. It showed all the buildings and other improvements that were physically done to the property. Um, again, why? I don't know. I'm just recalling what his recommendation was.
Um, it's, so is it a total of fifty-four acres that were given them or they have part of it now and, and all of it combined is fifty-four acres?
And Denise can answer that question.
See what I'm saying? How much now is owned by us?
Um.
Fifty-four acres is a lot.
Roughly. Roughly forty-nine acres.
That we currently have there?
Because the front properties are Ogumahill.
Okay.
So it's just the easement coming in and then it goes along Dan Road. I have dotted reds.
Altogether is fifty-four. They want it all.
There isn't fifty-four acres there.
Oh.
According to evaluation, it's forty-nine point six-six.
Cause in this, they have fifty-four, proposing a full acquisition of the fifty-four acre complex. And they said they're not interested in a land swap.
That's what the law.
Every, huh?
That's what this letter says.
Yeah. So they're going to get grants to fund pretty much probably a hundred percent of the construction to get it where it needs to be and then they're going to gain income from the property.
Well, I mean, I don't know if there's going to be charges here or if it's going to be. I mean, that charge to uh, have access to this. I, I don't, I don't.
I mean, for that, you know, baseball tournaments.
Well, maybe enough, maybe enough to hire somebody.
Charge for that now.
Yeah. But there's maintenance costs. I mean, somebody's got to cut the grass for the, the plate ball on. So, you know, the township doesn't have a parks. They don't have a PPW or anything like that. So they're paying somebody.
Yeah.
Even if they hire somebody, they're paying somebody. So they're charging enough money to pay for the costs.
The township is not the one paying for it. Ogumahill rec it.
Well, Ogumahill's rec, you know, well, somebody's charging enough to pay to cut the grass.
Do those play out there too, or is it just? Haven't been out there.
They have soccer out there too, don't they?
No.
Not anymore?
It's up at Clear Lake.
Um, tournaments and stuff.
It's not nearly as big as the Little League.
It's not like a.
The Little League fields.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's not the generate, generate, money generator like the Little League fields at this point in time.
It's, it's just hard for me to swallow that, the financial situation we're in and we're giving away forty-nine acres of prime real estate. But I, I also understand. You know, there's a lot of advantages that our area is going to get, get from it as well.
Well, if we were to sell it, we'd have to break the lease. And I don't know what the, I don't know what the terms of the lease is, but we'd have to go on record, break the lease with this, this, uh, group that's already making improvements to the property and doing things. And then turn around and sell it.
I understand. I'm just saying, forty-nine acres of property.
Ninety-nine year lease, right?
Mm-hmm.
So we don't have access to that, to do anything with that land anyways.
Lot of value.
Will, will it save us anything on, on, uh, insurance liability?
Like our umbrella.
I doubt it.
It won't decrease our umbrella and.
I mean, I seriously doubt it.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, mainly because we're really not liable for anything goes on there because it's under lease.
Right.
Well, I know you, you can get sued, but.
Well, but other things that we do are way riskier than what's going on.
Yeah.
So I, I doubt that it'll have any impact.
Yeah, that's true.
Are you guys okay at this point in time going forward the contract or do you want to talk about this further?
I really like to get this thing out, out of the, out of the way. This is.
I think we need to make some decisions. Um, I think we need to be a little bit, find a little more about this survey. I mean, kind of like you were saying, that's more of a mer- mortgage survey for they want the size of the buildings and everything. If we don't need to pay for that, that's two thousand dollars that the county could save.
Um, keeping in mind, this is just the recommendation of the attorney. It, it's just that. It's not a mandate. There's no law that says we have to do that. And if we're satisfied with the survey that was done in the nineties, then fine, we could move forward with that. This is just the, the attorney covering all the bases.
Yeah.
Maybe let it do this. And then he did say, you know, we have a formal agreement with the dollar exchange and all that kind of thing. But that's the one thing that was.
Is the township going to use a, an attorney as well? I would think that they would.
I would think so. Yeah, I, I don't know.
Yeah.
You already answered. I want to know whose attorney it was, West Branch or our attorney. So it's evidently our attorney.
Right, yeah.
So I don't see any need to pay for another survey when there's already been one done.
I don't see it.
Denise, do you see a need? That's what you do.
Yeah, but I, I, the survey was done at one point. The description is a survey description. I don't actually have the survey recorded in my office. So I don't know. The equalization hasn't been recorded survey. I haven't looked there yet. So actually seeing the picture of the survey, I haven't seen that. I'm just going by the description.
So would you recommend a survey or, or, I guess, again, I didn't understand the answer to, to be honest.
I don't, I wouldn't.
I wouldn't spend the money.
Fine with me to get rid of it without. That's fine with me. I don't think, I don't think the township cares.
It's done right. If we can do without having to spend a couple thousand dollars, that'd be great.
We'll find out more information on that moving forward?
I'll come back the next committee of the whole with a.
Oh, sure.
Contracts?
Can we just do something?
Yeah.
Can't we even just?
Can we get enough information to make a educated vote next week?
I want to see a contract first.
Yeah, let me get with the attorney, him draw that up so we can see it. And I'm sure the township will want to see it too. We'll go through that whole process. But in the meantime, we can respond to them, uh, by saying, yes, we're interested in, we'll be in contact.
So then what we're looking at is ready for the first of the year, then we should be able to make this thing happen.
Right, but I want to see a contract first. Marijuana operation oversight grant.
This is the annual, um, grant that the health department receives. They have to come through the county to qualify for the funds. Uh, it's not a whole lot of money and this is a program that they've been doing for a number of years now. Um, I can't remember, uh, you know, exactly the amounts of each year, but it's, it's generally in that five thousand dollar range. And they, um, are asking for the board's approval by the first of the year so that they can meet their deadlines.
Four thousand five hundred thirty-seven dollars?
A little disappointed. That's all we get.
So just for applying, applying for this grant, right?
Yeah.
Forty-five.
Questions?
Forty-five hundred.
Yeah.
No question.
Okay. Money billing efficiency improvements.
You recall, we had consumers in here back, I think it was in August, um, talking about various things. Um, at this point, we would be at the stage, if we wanted to pursue it, to figure out what portions of this we want to do now. And then shoot an RFP out, get pricing and, and get a contract to get to move forward. I know Commissioner Simmons has mentioned lighting and that's, that's like one aspect of this. We've talked about the air handler system, uh, and the, and the efficiencies that perhaps could be improved there. We've talked about the boilers, uh, windows, and we've also talked about, uh, constructing or doing work on the entrance to the building itself to make it, uh, more ADA compliant. For instance, maybe put one of those buttons out there for the door to automatically open. So it comes down to, at this point, um, what we want to do moving forward. Uh, the, um, uh, other aspects of energy efficiency, I mean, I, I mean, roll the dice. I mean, do we want to even get pricing on boilers right now? I'm very confident there are much more efficient boilers available today than the nineteen seventies models we have in there. Um, they, they probably would take up less space as well, but that might be something that's, uh, maybe too large of a bite, but we won't know that until we get bids.
Congratulations.
Another comment that was made when Judge Williams tried to help this handicapped guy use the uh, the bathroom. So that's probably a big thing we need to look at too. If our bathrooms aren't handicap accessible, we should at least have a one female, one male that in this lower floor when they come in the building, that is. Not necessarily all of them, but at least then you have one, one male, one female. So that's another, that's a big issue in, in my, my book.
Yeah.
I'd be awful if I was handicapped, couldn't go to the bathroom and then you know what's going to happen.
Yeah. To circle back to the boilers, I think it would be smart for us to, to get a price. I mean, like you said, our boilers are from the seventies.
Yeah.
So we definitely know there's going to be a lot more efficient boilers, but not only getting a price or, you know, obviously a couple prices for a new boiler, but we'd also be nice to be able to get some numbers to see how much more efficient this boiler is compared to now. And then we could take that, see how much maybe a monthly savings times that by how long. And, you know, I mean, kind of could see what, you know, some future trends could look like on, on just saving, you know, utility costs on, on that.
Right. And recall too, a consumer's was telling us their rebates that we qualify for, uh, to help with the pricing.
So consumers, I guess I, I, we, I know we've had conversation with them. They have been in the building or they not? They have been in the building?
Actually, we walked through it, um, looked at all those things immediately. The first lights, because obviously this is the first thing that you see many go in the building. But he, uh, wa- walked in and I, again, I'm not inclined mechanically, but looked at the, in that boiler room, uh, not only the boiler, but the, uh, air handlers where we go to shut those off. He just kind of stood back and, oh, yeah. Dating those things back to the seventies too. He said they, there's way more efficient than what we're doing right now, uh, even with those systems. So it was immediately had the wheels turning about things that we could do. But now it just comes down to what priorities do we want? What pricing do we want to get and?
Did they come back with ideas? Cause.
They really don't. I was, I was a little disappointed. They, they only came back with, well, if you do a boiler system, then you qualify for this kind of a rebate. And, you know, they, I thought they were going to come through and do an energy audit and show us, you know, if you do this much insulation, if you do this kind of a window, if you do this kind of lighting. No, they were just pointing at things that they know that, uh, there have been, you know, improvements on and suggested that we do that and then showed us the various rebates. And, uh, they still have the links to their webpage. They had all sorts of different things you could click on, you know, whether it's boilers or, or, you know, what, whatever type of system you want. And it would tell you what kind of rebate uh, we'd qualify for. Uh, he did also mention he was working with a school, I think he said in Lake City and was talking about the savings that they uh, uh, realized in their energy bills each month after they went through, uh, and made some improvements. But other than that, there was no formal, you know, report that they provided at all.
Hmm, that is disappointing because I've had some conversation with them and, and they had did that in the past. So who was the gentleman who's?
I have his information back at my desk.
Was it Rich Castle?
No. No, this was somebody though that Rich had referred us to. They've, this wasn't, uh, gentleman that was here was not an employee of consumers, but was a contractor with them. Who walked through buildings like this and made the various suggestions, uh, but that was actually through Rich. That's how I got his name.
Commissioner Wiltie?
Uh, I know you sent us some information on that. Jim, did you send us information where we could see some comparables like that school type of cost savings they're, they're looking at with, with what they actually did?
I might have, but it's long enough ago. I don't remember exactly what all we had. There, there was quite a stack.
I'd like to seize that if I could.
Yeah, we need to move forward with this.
Did, wow, yes. Did the high school out here have some uh, things done out there to save, to save, uh, utilities, like electricity and stuff? They have consumers go at this high school?
Yeah, it was in Lake City. And yes, it was actually the, the gentleman that was here who actually went through that building and drew up the suggestions and then they just, he helped, helped them find their contractors and do what needed to be done.
So my understanding is they changed lighting in that building. Be interested to know if they're, if their utility bills come down at all, as far as electricity goes.
I have one more question.
Go ahead, Commissioner May. Did you have something?
What kind of money do we have to spend on this?
We are for money.
So we have.
And what do we have remaining in ARPA funds?
Let's say something in the neighborhood of one point seven million.
Any suggestions, Mr. May?
Yeah, before the five hundred thousand committed to the shares budget.
Um, I think it was after. I think we had all the commitments contracted. A lot of people have been looking. I've got a handy spreadsheet to confirm that.
I thought it was after, but we gotta make sure.
Yeah.
I hope you're right because that would be twice. Nine point seven. Well.
It was one point two.
I didn't do, maybe.
There was one point two.
I think so.
I think there's one point two.
I think so.
Now that we said that out loud, I think there's one point two. Not sure, Scott?
Uh, I just had a boiler put in my house. Propane. No more cutting wood. Um, yeah, well, uh, well, Will McLean Boiler, which is a big brand name. I mean, maybe we should, we should call their company and just ask them, can you come in, give us a survey on our boilers and, you know, what kind, they should be able to provide us some type of or whatever boiler we have. It's easy enough to go in the boiler room and see what kind of boiler we have. Call that company and say, you're not, they're not the contractor and they're not putting one in, but tell us what you're building now fifty years later.
So.
You know, something, I mean.
Yeah. Can I make a comment to that? So that was a question I was going to ask you because I know we had talked before about having like a, a general superintendent that would be the one to reach out to get these, bring everything together, kind of quarterback it. What is your thoughts on who's going to do that?
That's not a bad idea. Um, you, you hire somebody who has the expertise in that area for, you know, whatever amount, they can oversee the, the project and that will help assure that what's being installed is, you know, compatible with the building, number one, and, uh, making sure it's done according to code and, and everything else. So, yeah, I would suggest that we do that. Uh, but in the meantime, I have no idea what kind of money we're talking about to even get into a project like this. And they, you know, don't want us to get too deep and find out it's a four million commitment and we can't do it.
But then again, at the same time, we need to know if it's going to be four million.
Yeah, we have, yeah. Or find out, we're going to have to dive in far enough to, is this something we could get, uh, possibly our co-enforcement officers involved with to help us?
Possibly. Um, again, I don't know. It's probably going to be Craig in this case.
Yeah.
Um, it's mechanical and it can at least point us to, you know, vendors who do this sort of thing, but I'm sure he's got some expertise he can help us with.
Okay.
I, I think we need to continue to put this on the committee of the whole. So we're moving forward with it.
Oh, I like the boiler idea because I think we'll say see a savings, sir. Light sue. I mean, there's no doubt that we're running lights twenty-four, or not twenty-four, but we're running them a lot in hours of the week. So, you know, probably even more so than the, their handling, but, uh, any, any one of those avenues is going to save us money because we're, we're in seventies technology, everything we got.
And one of my townships, uh, two of them did with their COVID money, did some, uh, lighting replacements in their halls and one had a grant for it. Uh, Prime Electric came out and did it. One did lighting in their parking lot. It's been quite a bit redone in that aspect. So what is the plan right now with this project? What's the next step, guys? Cause we just talked about a lot of things.
Well, we got to have somebody be doing this. Uh, uh, let's reach out to Craig and see if
he's willing.
If he's willing to take this on. If not. If he's willing to take this on, if not. Have to hire somebody to do it.
Should be nice if Craig could, one less expense.
If nothing else, we can bring him to the next committee of the whole meeting and he can give us some guidance.
Right.
And maybe some additional, you know, pointers, you know, when you're looking at boilers, you should do X, Y, and Z. And don't forget to do whatever, I mean, he'd be able to help us with at least scoping out what we're really asking. And, you know, something like lighting is relatively simple, but if we can get somebody to bid on it. Uh, but it would be just a matter of replacing the lights that we have in the building. And remember our experience with this building, there are fewer lights in here, but it's brighter. But there are fewer lights and I suspect we're going to find something similar in the, in the larger building.
Yeah.
I, it's way brighter in here than it used to be, I can, you know, just say that. And the lights are, you know, way more attractive than the typical drop ceiling light that you see.
Okay, uh, election matters.
You wanted this on your committee of the whole meetings through a year, just to take stock in where things stood.
Anything new?
Saw the newspaper, West Branch, our city voted to put, um, the millage on May, so we can.
So it's for sure go.
For sure, yeah, it's a, and you're renewal.
And we, at our January, January twelfth budget meeting, Karen and Commissioner Simmons had invited all the stakeholders. Uh, to that meeting so we can talk strategy for the millages.
I've had a couple townships reach out to wanting to know, um, information in regards to that. I just have been saying there's a meeting on the twelfth. I didn't invite any of the township people to attend that. Do, do you don't want them there, right? Just for township's millages.
The public meeting.
Okay.
It's on Zoom too, where you can.
Well, there's a number, it's gonna be a number of township initiatives going on the ballot.
And then they're in the same boat, they want to do the same thing, they want to do what's best.
To try to get their villages.
There's no doubt, you guys, we got a lot of millages, the economy and everything right now is. Voter exhaustion is definitely going to be a, a concern. While we're talking about millages, I know one thing that we had discussed, um, for the Headley Restoration. Is, you know, we as commissioners really need to start that conversation of what are we going to lose? If we do not pass the Headley Restoration. I think sooner we can get that information together, the better. Because we were hoping come mid February or so, we'd have to be able to have, you know, a nice packet put together. And be able to start to get that out to our, our residents.
Yeah, Tim and, Tim and I have already talked about and said, yeah, we, we're going to have to have something that says, this is what's going to happen if it doesn't pass. You just have to have it.
Well, something that will also depend on if the, unfortunately, if the February millages pass, or millage passes. I mean, that'll be a huge.
If it doesn't pass.
If it doesn't pass.
Right, and we need to talk about that before February.
But I mean, that will play impact on what we just, what happens with even the Headley.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
A lot of people are talking about that February. Vote now.
A lot of people didn't even know about it.
Nope, no.
A lot of people didn't know about it.
They do now.
Well, well, I know they do know.
So, uh, anything else on election matters?
Uh, that January twelfth meeting is going.
Maybe we should put something on the county website to help educate the public about our February ballot proposal.
I think it should be everywhere.
Yeah, and that flyer that Karen created is, is just ideal. I mean, it just hits the, okay, it's the main points and that would be something that could very easily be put on the webpage. I know we haven't talked about it at the committee level yet, but something like that ready made, it's, it. Don't know that there's another way to explain it outside of, you know, what happens if it doesn't pass. And that's a conversation we were going to have on the twelfth as well. Uh, but that was the only missing part. The flyer, I think, again, is perfect and you could just click a button on the webpage and you can see it.
Where's this flyer at?
It's circulating for the budget committee right now to, to review.
You're talking about the Headley in.
Right.
Yes.
Randy and I put together. To review in January to see if it's something you want factual information to start educating the public about for May. And then let the backside to list what cuts the board would make should it fail, these are the services that will be lost. But we have a pending proposal in February and there's no education in our, like, that yet. That's important to get that education out there as to what will happen.
That department, I, I, I guess any help that they can get, absolutely, but that department. Uh, should be doing that, correct? I mean, the, no, I don't run the, I mean, assumptions, but what, what would be cut if that doesn't pass? But to me, they're the ones making those decisions.
Well, Road Patrol Millage doesn't pass, Road Patrol will be on it.
Well, they need to.
Well, there's still a sheriff's, there's still a sheriff's budget though.
They do their budget.
That's not Road Patrol.
Well, it has been up until the Road Patrol Millage, there, there was a sheriff's budget. The Road Patrol Millage just supplemented that, it didn't replace it, it supplemented it.
Right.
So you just go back to pre-Road Patrol Millage. And then we have to decide how much money is going to go in that budget.
At the very least, maybe we could at least get the ballot wording on the website for people to start seeing how to.
You can do that, I mean, we've already talked about that, I mean.
What's the deadline to request an absentee ballot for the February? I did have somebody ask me that.
Don't take, I, I, I read someplace where they get an automatic, you get an automatic absentee?
I read you had to request.
How does that go? You know?
There's a lot of law changes that the people voted for.
Right, I get that, I get that.
Um, so. They're doing away with, eventually by the end of this year, they're going to be doing away with the absent voter list. And transitioning to a permanent ballot list. To which Christie talked about it when she came to MTA.
Right, right.
It's a little bit confusing.
Oh, it's a lot confusing.
To try and explain and I don't want to say it wrong, so that's where I'm going to leave it. But there are changes. That, yeah, uh, there's some changes coming, yes, but it won't be effective this, um. February, it will probably be more like the end of the year, November.
So do they have to request an absentee ballot at this point for the February?
Yeah, they're, they're starting to send out the applications, um, this week, I'm trying to find my calendar.
Can you let me, can you announce when, when you find it, when the deadline is, because people are asking. Okay, yes.
I saw, uh, one of the headlines in B C, Tennessee, um. I haven't had a chance to read it yet about the state's making it much easier for people to register to vote. And I have not read that article yet, so I, I don't know what it entails. So there's still changes being coming down the tubes as we sit here.
There's a lot of chaos. And misunderstanding, so more to come on that, uh, automated formios.
Just a heads up for the board, um, over this past couple of weeks is going back and forth with Tracy. We get, um. Expense vouchers in particular, they come in many different forms. Some people bring in hard copies, some people do, you know, partial, uh, through our seamless docs. Uh, we, in talking about it, we've had the seamless doc system in here long enough. That there really is no reason for anyone to turn in, uh, manual form anymore for things like the travel reimbursement. So the system is set up so the employee can type in if it's travel or if it's a reimbursement on a phone expense or whatever it might be on the form. It then goes to their department head who then says yes or no to the expense. Uh, once that's approved, it goes right to Tracy for processing. Uh, very, very slick system, it's a lot like our, um. Time card system where it's all automated and very few entries need to be made. So, um, what I'm going to be doing shortly after the first of the year, I'm going to meet with department, I believe it's on January eighth. And just say, we're not taking those forms on paper anymore, they all need to be automated. And for the management of this, which makes it really nice, is that it makes the record for us. So if we wanted to see how many expense vouchers were turned in between February and May, we can see it, it's there. We don't have to go hunting for anything. Um, this has been working very well with our, uh, vehicle certification forms right now. Where the employees are just filling those out and I get a list that's ready for the insurance carrier when they need to see our list of drivers. They got all the information they need with the push of a button, we're not hunting for things anymore. So it's a big time saver for us. Uh, so as much as I can for all those automated forms, that's the only way we're going to accept it. Now, there's going to be an exception, if you need a change in the routing and account number for your payroll. Or for your per DM checks or something, you are going to have to sign something on that physically yourself. We're not going to take those over the email or internet. And that's because we've been bombarded with what we know are phony requests, we know they are. Uh, so one way to just curtail that, um, you're going to have to be there and sign it and we'll see you sign it and good enough. Other than that, these other forms for the record keeping, uh, and there's quite a few of them now, uh, that we just want to go that route. Uh, and unless there's some very compelling reason not to, that we want to be the only way we accept those forms. All the checks and balances are in place, it's very efficient.
You, you shouldn't need a, a resolution.
I'm just letting you know that this is going to happen, so if you get phone calls, I'm aware of it and.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, we, we gotta start using technology, I mean, this is ridiculous to, so. Uh, handwriting things and stuff like that and anybody, I, um, my turn to do claims and I'm seeing it all the time. And I'm still seeing so many of these claims coming through and they scratch off a total and they add another thing on. This is nuts, I mean, come on. You don't have your ducks in a row by the time it's time to put your claim in, then it goes the next, next cycle. You know, and. Um, I was, I was, matter of fact, I was going to bring that up again when I, when I first started and I did claims right at first. I'm looking at, I'm looking at claims that have no description on them. Or it's a description that that department understands, but I don't. You know, because it's a. A number for something, but I don't understand what it is, but it's a cost. So back when I first started, I asked if, if the memo could go out to departments to just. I don't need a paragraph, I don't need a, I don't need a whole story, just something simple, part for a car. Or copy paper, whatever, forms, forms for something. You know, because sometimes they're ordering forms that cost a thousand dollars, with the number of forms and what, in the courts. I don't know, heck, I don't know. But, you know, so I, I was going to bring it up and, and I'm glad somebody said something. Because, uh, I think we need to do that again, just for those I return is next time. Because my turn is almost over with.
It is.
You know, and it, it just, it's confusing, you know, I've been doing them enough now, I know most of, most of what, what it is. But there's still some stuff that isn't, and it's no big thing. The, the people that did do a little thing would say, oh, it's no big thing for me, I can jot down a sentence what something is.
Right. Uh, road commission, wait, wait, master.
Way master contract, I went to the road commission meeting, uh, Wednesday morning, um. They contacted the sheriff and the sheriff said that, uh, he wasn't manned for it. They're just looking, they're looking for, they'd like to have, they don't need to have a deputy, but they'd like to have a. Just during seasonal weight restrictions, usually five to six weeks long, it'd be twenty-five, thirty hours a week. And I was looking at it and I was hoping the sheriff be here tonight or somebody from there. Deputy Vetter was part-time and he's coming back on as snowmobile. This would be the same thing, it would be, we'd call it a grant, but it's a contract, they're willing to pay all the hours. Uh, all the expenses to do this. Uh, I, I would have liked to ask the sheriff, why wouldn't you do it with a part-time guy?
Well, why, I guess why don't they just hire one? Then come through us.
Because they're looking, they're looking for a certified deputy.
I understand.
That's what they're looking for. Well, they're just saying, there's a department here in the county and it's got certified deputies, that's so that's what they're trying to do. And since I went to the meeting, I thought, well, I'd bring it up, you know?
But they did have a conversation already with the sheriff and, and.
Yeah, through email or over the phone, I don't know.
So I just got a quick data to this, um, there's also like a three-day training that this person would have to do at Delta College or somewhere. But, um, Pat, um, the head of the road commission sent me an email, so I have the description and all that. I could forward it to you, Tim, and then if you could forward that to the sheriff and the undersheriff. And I mean, you, you brought up a great point, I mean, Officer Vetter, he's an asset, he's done a lot of great things for grants and everything else. Maybe he'd be interested and it sounds like it's five to six weeks, end of March, April, around there.
Kind of layoffs, so I would, I'm sure somebody's interested.
I'll forward you that email and then you can forward it on and.
Well, from what I understand is all three of the laid off deputies already have acquired jobs someplace.
Well, we don't.
So there's nobody to go back onto the. On the list right now.
We don't know unless we ask, but then also this adds to the resume, I mean, this is, makes them more marketable.
But it's a short-term contract, I mean, it's a, you know, usually, uh, weight restrictions last five weeks. Five to six weeks. And they're saying, you know, they're saying six to eight, well, they're probably including the three-day trainings, you know? But they're paying for everything, I mean, it doesn't cost us anything.
And they have their own vehicle and everything.
I'd be surprised by how many people would be interested in that, in springtime, there's not a lot going on.
I'd go, I was interested.
Alright.
I've been underneath the truck before.
Some more to come on that.
Yeah, we're going to.
Okay, the table that was related to the promotion, um, you, the promotion and.
Oh, the promotion, yeah, well, um. We've had some conversations with the sheriff's department. And, uh. Uh, on our lo- last law enforcement meeting and, uh. Deputy or Lieutenant, uh, Lori Beck there from, uh, Roscommon County Jail came down.
Jail administrator.
Jail administrator, whatever, whatever title is, yeah, anyway, uh. She was explaining how they, uh, they charge inmates twenty dollars a day up there. She laid out their whole program and everything, it's very successful. And I was really hoping that we would get. Uh, some response from the sheriff's office about that, using, doing that. So, um.
And the response was what?
Well, I guess they're working on something. They contacted, they've talked to Tim a little bit and they're working on something, I don't know.
About that much discussion, but yeah, they're working on something.
Yeah.
Before we go any farther with the conversation, I sent you an email roughly about four thirty tonight. Uh, grievance has landed, a step three grievance on my desk this morning concerning the promotion. They're actually grieving, um, the lack of, um, uh, approval of that promotion. Even though it's still under consideration, so it's somewhat premature that way. So rather than getting into any conversation about it right now, um, I'd like to have the opportunity first to talk to the attorney about it. Obviously, I've got to have a, a meeting with the union and, um, provide a disposition on the grievance itself. But I don't want us getting into trouble talking about it tonight, uh, now that we know this grievance has landed. So, uh, caution you with that, with that input.
You got, well, you have a closed session.
Yeah, we do. Well, let's go.
Schedule this, this is a different contractual.
Yes, it is.
Okay, different, okay.
I guess then we'll, we'll talk more about that in closed session.
Sure.
Uh, any public comment? Thanks for your attendance, guys.
Merry Christmas, you guys, thank you.
Any, any public comment on the phone?
See mom's back?
I see mom's back.
Hi, mom. Hi, mom.
I reminded, I reminded her tonight at the meeting. I don't remind her, she forgets. No public comment?
I'm making a motion to go into closed session. Uh, MCO one five point two six eight C on collective bargaining agreement.
That's our word. Roll cover open.
Cindy David.
Yes.
Roger Mayhew.
Yes.
Charles Wiltse.
Yes.
Brenda Simmons.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Okay, we're gonna go in a closed session, guys.
It's button down the hatch.
Closing doors.
Two doors. Brenda, you're closest to that one?
Thanks, Tom.
I'm helping.
I'll give you a call.
Do you mind closing that door back there?
Sounds good. Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll call you back, Tom.
I want to adjourn.
Right here.
If a motion was support to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Support, Tim.
All members say yes.
Alright, yeah.
Most. We're adjourned at six fifty-eight.
Merry Christmas, everyone.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you, Tim.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Tim.
I thought you were in the office tomorrow.
Brett, did you give me?